Call the meeting order, please rise for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tonight, I think the invocation is going to be given by Pastor Todd Cole. Is Todd here? There he is. Now, please come forward. This is from the Life Spring Church, correct? Tell us just a little bit about the church, real quick. And, oh, you've got to go to the podium, that's right.
We are in the process of starting Life Spring. We are gathering a launch team now and getting ready to get started with some life groups, and then we'll have weekly services, hopefully in the fall of next year. So, we're looking for team members right now that'll help us begin serving in the community and helping to connect people to each other.
Super. You got a place yet?
Not yet.
It's tough, but, yeah, keep trying. All right, go ahead, sorry.
All right. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together this evening, and know, God, that you are in this place. And, Father, you are, you have blessed us in such incredible and amazing ways. Each and every one of us have scores of blessings that we could bring attention to tonight. But, Lord, we also have challenges in our families and in our own lives and as a community. And, Father, we know that you are, Lord, not only of our blessings, but also of our challenges, and the challenges that we face, God, even those are good things that you can use to bring us closer to you. And so, God, I pray that during this time tonight, that we will feel your presence among us, God, that you'll give us wisdom, guidance, and discernment to conduct the business of this town in a way that brings honor and glory to your name. And, Father, I pray that you would help us to see you and draw closer to you each and every day. And, God, we thank you for allowing us the opportunity to know you and to make you known in this community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you so much.
Item number four, just with approval, the October 21st, 2014 meeting agenda, Mayor Portman.
Motion to adopt the agenda as printed with the special presentation and edit.
Second.
Most have made second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We have a little change of agenda tonight. Do you know what it is? Yeah, you do. Tonight is Stephanie's last town council meeting as a member of the town of Holly Springs staff. It's been 20 years, she started five years old. It's been 20 years since she came to work at Holly Springs as the town's only engineering professional. It was her drive, determination, and dedication to public service that has resulted in a robust infrastructure that serves the town today and will for decades to come. Stephanie is retiring effective November 1st. She began her engineering career as a town of Cary, and we won't hold that against you, in 1986, and came to work in Holly Springs on October 24th, 1994. Whereas, 20 years ago, when Stephanie L. Sedano, P.E., came to work for the town of Holly Springs, you probably didn't know this, but there was only 1,500 people lived here. Do you remember that, Stephanie? Oh, yeah. And you were one of them. There was one traffic light, and that was a blinking yellow caution light at that. The town's wastewater treatment plant was adequately sized at only 250,000 gallons a day. Most of the streets in town were two-lane state roads. There was no Highway 55 bypass. Even I remember that. There were no schools, no grocery stores, no restaurants, no parks, and a person could count the number of subdivisions on one hand, right? And whereas, during her tenure and under her guidance and leadership, the town of Holly Springs grew to 30,000 people. That was just, what, two weeks ago? Gina, about that? And served as a robust infrastructure of streets, water, and sewer lines, storm drains, treated reused water, sidewalks, parks, schools, businesses, and not one, but lots of traffic lights. We love, we love traffic lights. Whereas, this all because, on October 24th, 1994, Stephanie was hired as the town's only engineering professional. She imagined a very different future for Holly Springs. I'm going to cry here in a minute. She set about with dedication, determination, expertise, foresight, and an unmatched integrity to meet the challenges of building a town, a task that took exactly 20 years. Whereas, because building a town in which people would want to live demands a dedicated focus, Stephanie sacrificed more Saturday mornings and school nights away from her family than she cares to remember. I guess you told her that, right? So, she could review subdivision plans, attend town council meetings, planning board, and project public information meetings, design infrastructure expansions, seek and apply for grant funding, which you've done quite well on, thank you very much, design infrastructure expansions, and funding to pay for improvements and strategize for the future. And, whereas, the mayor and town council of the town of Holly Springs recognizes that they will miss the professional expertise, advice, foresight, and counsel on which they so heavily relied, and they will especially miss Stephanie on a more personal level as a respected friend who managed to successfully balance her faith, family life, and her career as a public servant. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Dick Sears, on behalf of all members of town council and the citizens of Holly Springs, North Carolina, do hereby express to Stephanie L. Sedano, P.E., our deep appreciation and gratitude for her innovation and devotion to this community, we offer her the very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in her well-deserved retirement, and we bestow the key to the town that Stephanie played such a key role in. So, Stephanie, over here, please.
You can put your coffee down.
Put your coffee down.
I actually feel exhausted after all that.
Really? First of all, this is the proclamation, which I think I just read.
You think?
Verbatim. But never, never before have I seen a key this nice. I have a little bitty key in my office. Look at that.
Oh, look at that.
Oh, that is awesome. That, oh, that is wonderful. This comes your office. I wasn't prepared.
I know you weren't prepared. It's a surprise. If you want to say a few things, fine, please.
I'll say a couple of things. Thank you very much for this surprise. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I especially love shiny objects.
That's a great key.
That's a great key, so, but, yeah, no, it was, actually, I was sitting over here before the meeting started, talking to Lynn, saying, "Hey, Lynn, were you here when we used to meet in the Hunt Center for the council meetings?" I remembered that. And when we couldn't, I would sit there at those meetings, and no citizens would come. You know, there was, just nobody would seem to be interested in what we were doing. Yes, that sign's new, isn't it?
There we go.
I said, "My very last meeting."
We have that, too.
But, yeah, no, I just mentioned to Lynn, I said, you know, "I remember those Hunt Center meetings, I remember, you know, working for the town, being new with the town," and thinking, "Gosh, nobody's really interested in what's going on here," but that has definitely changed, so, yeah, which very good, which is a good thing. But, thank you very much. It has been awesome and incredible, and I've enjoyed the council members, the staff, the citizens, everybody that I've worked with. Of course, I could not have gone back and, like, written a story that, I mean, it's been hard at times, but it's been very fulfilling. It's with very mixed feelings that I leave because I enjoy the people I work with and what I do, but I do feel that it is time for me to move on to something else, so, thank you.
Forty-five, she retired at 45.
I thought I was 25. You said I started when I was five.
Well, that's right, that's right.
So, but you leave the math to me.
I'll leave it there.
Okay, great.
Congratulations, Stephanie.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you.
We recognized a talent when you were five years old, you know, so.
She was a P.E. then.
Took a little bit of.
All right, back to the agenda. Item number five, public comment period, sheet. Do we have anybody speaking for public comment?
Chief, can you see if there's a sheet back there with the signatures on it?
Should be a couple of them.
The pink and blue sheets?
Okay, then we all open and close the public hearing. Or, public comment period, excuse me. Agenda item 6A, public hearing, annexation A 1406, Wake County Public School property, and it's going to be Sean. You don't even look like Laura.
I don't even want to try.
I am disappointed, because I always like to beat Laura here.
Good evening, everybody. This annexation, like the mayor said, is for the Wake County Public Schools property out on New Hill Holly Springs Road. There's actually four properties here totaling approximately 17.83 acres. This is directly adjacent to the 12 Oaks subdivision, kind of by their first entrance off of Green Oaks Parkway. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go back. There you go.
Pretty straightforward.
Motion to adopt annexation ordinance A 1406, annexing 17.837 plus or minus acres owned by the Wake County Public School System, and more particularly described on the screen.
Second.
Most have made second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Sean, quick thing, is it going to be a public, I mean, a middle school or an elementary school?
It's an elementary school.
Elementary, isn't it?
Elementary.
Great.
I know we talked about it, but I forgot.
E 43, I think it's called. That is correct. I think they're going to change it eventually.
And I've heard it opens in 2015. Is there any new news on that one, do you know?
Oh, can't.
No news?
2016.
Sixteen, seventeen?
Sixteen, seventeen.
Thanks, Tom.
Or they'd be really quick.
It was 15 at one time. Anyway. Agenda item 6B, public hearing, 14 REZ 11, Bible Way Court, Sean again.
All right. This rezoning is on Bible Way Court, just south of Optimus Farm Road. This is the existing Westcott subdivision here, and this is Sunset Oaks over to the east on both the north and south side of Optimus Farm Road. The specific request before you tonight is to rezone approximately 8.43 acres, it's about, it's four parcels, from R-10 conditional use residential to general use R-10 residential. This is kind of a unique situation for us. Typically, we are rezoning to a conditional use district, however, in this case, the applicant is requesting to remove all the conditions and go back to a general use rezoning district that would not have any conditions attached to it. In order to do that, you have to submit a new rezoning application and go through the public hearing process again in order to get agreement from the council that these conditions should be removed. So, as you can see on the little table on the bottom of the screen here, there are five conditions originally placed on this rezoning back in 2010, a minimum square footage of 3,000 square feet, brick and stone on the facade of the dwelling, prohibition of vinyl siding on the dwellings, a condition that lots are to be left as wooded as possible, and that there will be no driveway off of Optimus Farm Road for any properties in this zoning district. This is the comprehensive plan. As you can see, it's designated as residential. Residential is intended to provide a density of 2 to 15 units per acre. Of course, that higher density only should be approved as you get closer to these growth rings here. And so, since this one is so far away from the growth ring, the lower end of that spectrum is more appropriate. This is the existing zoning map. As you can see, they're currently zoned R-10 conditional use. Westcott to the south is zoned R-10, and that is a general use district without conditions. Then you have Sunset Oaks over to the east here, which is a PUD, and that has varying densities within it. The R-10 zoning district has a maximum density of 3.25 units per acre, so if you are agreeable to removing those conditions, that will not change the minimum lot size that would be allowed, and that will not change the maximum density that would be allowed. It would simply just be removing those conditions. The planning board heard this request. They recommended approval 5-0. They discussed particularly the driveway off of Optimus Farm Road condition. There were some concern that by removing that condition, we could possibly be opening it up to having a driveway off of a major roadway. Staff's answer to the planning board was agreeable to the planning board. They found that we do have sufficient policies that exist to limit the probability of a driveway off of Optimus Farm Road. Do you have any?
Before we do that, let me, let me open up the public hearing, even though I don't think anybody's signed up. Anybody wishing to speak? No, we'll close public hearing. I did have one question. Tell me about the vinyl siding issue that's removed. Am I correct?
The condition number three.
Yes, so, the vinyl siding, that was a condition that was originally placed that would prohibit the homes from having vinyl siding. The applicant has just requested that that be removed. It might be appropriate to request to him why he's requesting to remove that condition. There's nothing in our UDO that would prevent somebody from putting vinyl siding on a house, so, you know, that's, that's limited through conditions, and if the applicant requests to remove it, which they have tonight, then that's up to the council to decide if that's an appropriate condition to have for this zoning district or if it's not appropriate. And that was my main question, was, was why, and because it wasn't listed in any of our materials here, the reason why. The fact that it was, you know, R-10 CU initially, I mean, makes it sort of, gave me the, you know, when you see that, it makes it very, it makes it easy to approve it.
Right.
Because there are extra conditions. I'm, my, my curiosity is, why, why now? Because it seems like we just approved it for R-10 CU recently. I would assume that a developer would want to change it to just plain old R-10 because maybe nothing has happened over the course of a year or two, and it's, they're having a problem selling lots. But it seems like it was just last month, well, it was last month, right, that we approved R-10 CU, now, all of a sudden, you know, while the ink is still wet, now they want to change it. So, that's, that's my, that's my concern about, about this, and the fact that, also the fact that I have to ask in this meeting tonight why it's, why they're asking for this change, and it's not, they're not being forthcoming with why in the, in their, the material that they provided. Just to clear, the original rezoning for the conditions was actually back in 2010, so it was four years ago that that request was originally heard. There was a rezoning recently just to the south for an R-10 zoning district directly adjacent to Westcott subdivision as well. What happened then, a month or so? We approved the subdivision? You approved the subdivision for, for this portion that was rezoned down here. Correct.
And were there conditions on that one?
That was a straight R-10 rezoning.
The same as what they're requesting here.
Right, yeah, I can pull up, here's the zoning map for you. So, these are the two properties that were rezoned, just straight R-10.
Other comments or questions?
Who owns those other two properties?
These in the middle here, or these down here?
Both.
The applicant owns these two properties, I believe. I do not believe that the applicant tonight owns these properties as of now, but that may be a better question suited for the applicant.
But it's not appropriate right now, is what we're just trying to decide. So, this just brings it in line with whatever, what, all that's around it. They're all R-10s, Westcott is R-10?
Right. Westcott is R-10, doesn't have any conditions attached to it. Across the street to the north and to the west, that's Wake County jurisdiction, Wake County zoning. The town does have some properties across the street that are zoned R-30, and that's just because when they were annexed, the property owner didn't request to be rezoned at that time. So, it is consistent with what we, we have over along Bible Way Court, and particularly across the creek here in Sunset Oaks PUD. This is probably much more dense than an R-10 zoning would get you, at least in this portion directly adjacent to Optimus Farm Road.
Do the applicant?
No.
Well, it's a little bit inappropriate, but go ahead, hurry up. That's okay.
This is, maybe you'd have to reopen the public hearing.
Reopen the public hearing. So, you have to come up to the podium. You'll hold on? All right. More comments or questions?
Let's go back to those conditions that were, the lots are to be left as wooded as possible, minimum clearing is required. What are the other that are, the next?
There's no, there's no conditions on any of the other properties around Westcott and all of the rest. None of them have any conditions.
Correct.
Those were actually imposed by the applicant at the time in 2010 when they asked for that. They imposed it themselves, and now they're asking them voluntarily to take them off.
That is correct.
Anything else?
Nope.
No?
But I think when we went into the subdivision, you know, I think the assumption is that it would kind of match.
Right.
What was, what's in currently in Westcott.
I want to hit a motion?
Motion to.
Sorry? Sorry, there's two. Go ahead.
Motion to accept the following statements as being true. The requesting zone map change from R-10 CU conditional, residential conditional use to R-10 residential is consistent with Division Holly Springs comprehensive plan since the future land use plan map indicates the property as residential and not located within a high-density growth node. The R-10 residential district will allow for this designation to be carried out by being as an appropriate density for this area.
Second.
Motion made second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. You now, slate number two.
Motion to adopt ordinance 14-REZ 11 to approve and enact zone map change, petition number 14-REZ-11, to change the zoning of 8.43 acres of Wake County, pin numbers 0669-369-319, 0669-369-255, 0669-369-178, and 0669-453807, from R-10 CU residential conditional use to R-10 residential as submitted by Baker and Company.
Second.
Most have made second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One opposed. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Stay up. Agenda item six, this is a Sean hearing. Agenda item 6C, public hearing, 14 SEU 07, CrossFit Zeal, again, Sean. And this is sworn testimony? No, it isn't. Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
This property is located at 171 Tradition Trail. This is out in the Holly Springs Business Park. May be familiar to some of you as where the Daniel Derr's Action Sports Complex is located, is in the same facility. Let's see, and the request before you tonight is to allow a fitness center in the Research and Technology Zoning District. A fitness center is a special exception use in the RT district. The proposed facility will be approximately 5,000 square feet in size, and the CrossFit Zeal currently operates at 206 Premier Drive, which is in the Business Park already. However, they are moving to a larger location. Since they are moving from one location to the other, they are required to obtain a special exception use for their new location, which is why they are before you tonight. The planning board heard this request last month. They had some concerns over whether or not this, by recommending approval for this use at this location, whether or not it would allow the entire facility to be used for a fitness center at some point in time, or if it would just be limited to the 5,000 square feet that the applicant was, had indicated on their application. Because the applicant was specific in their location within the center, it does limit it to just that location. The planning board was concerned that if they opened the whole, the whole property up to a fitness center, that they wouldn't be able to review any additional request to have a fitness center in that building should they, should somebody else come forward. So, they were satisfied that they would be limiting this use to just one location. If you have any further questions for me, I'd be happy to address them, and the applicant is here as well.
The applicants are here. They've all signed and been sworn in. If the council has any questions of them, now would be the time to do it. Doesn't look like it? I think we're good. We're good.
Tom?
Tom, yes, please.
Planning Board rep.
Sean just referred to.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Make sure you introduce yourself, Tom.
You know the drill. Gosh.
Tom Hughes, planning board representative for this evening. The question that we had really was related to, because I've had a couple of other incidents come where the address refers to the building as a whole, and yet, do we control the building as a whole if we approve it at that address, or do we limit it just to? And we were satisfied that, but we've had a couple of occasions where, especially in the Business Park, the whole building has a, has an address to it, and yet, the motion is specific to that address. So, how do we retain the ability to review any further changes to that facility? And what we, what we agreed on was that the submission was, as Sean said, very specific to that 5,000 square feet, and we were satisfied with that. But we do get a lot of requests. The Growler came in the other day, and that was, you know, very specific, too. So, we just want to be able to preserve the right to see those opportunities as they come along and be able to make an informed decision.
Is it, is it an address, like a suite number or anything on that, or?
Well, but the proposal didn't have that, and we didn't know that. So, the other way to do it was to limit it specifically as the application with the defined square footage so that we were approving that square footage and not necessarily address as a whole.
That limits that.
Got it.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for special exception use petition, number 14 SEU 07 for CrossFit Zeal, to allow for a fitness center in the RT Research and Technology District as submitted by CrossFit Zeal.
Second.
Most have made second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Number two.
Motion to approve special exception use permit 14-SEU 07 submitted by CrossFit Zeal dated 15, 2014, with the following two conditions stated on, as stated on the screen.
Second.
Most have made second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Good job. Agenda item 6D, public hearing, 14 UDO 02, BOA, and PB, appointment term modification. Gina Clapp.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, darling.
Probably about a month or two ago, I had introduced the topic of Board of Adjustment and Planning Board terms. As you know, usually in October is when we have applications due to us for our new members for the following fiscal or calendar year's terms to begin. And in some conversations that I've been having throughout the past year internally with other staff, we've been interested in potentially changing the expiration date of the terms of our board members. Currently, the terms end on December 31st of the calendar year. There's three-year staggered terms for both of the boards, and we are proposing to change their term ending date to the last day of February. What we've been finding out over the years, it's really challenging, is we're getting a lot more development, a lot more training is actually required of our boards. It's very difficult appointing boards in December with the crazy holiday season and then trying to get them active the second week of January to perform for Board of Adjustment, or even at the end of January for Planning Board. And so, we feel that if we do appointments in January and have a March 1st, which would be the second meeting in, second week of March for Board of Adjustment, last week of March gives us plenty of time without a lot of conflicts and dates to hold enough training for both Board of Adjustment and Planning Board. Also, what we've found out, too, and what we've been having some challenges with, is Wake County Commissioners the last few years are now only doing one meeting in December. And so, by time you make the appointments at your first meeting in December, I can't get the ETJ members to their December meeting, and so, it would be sometimes the same week as a Board of Adjustment that they're making the appointments to our ETJ. So, it's very time-sensitive issues going on with our appointments. And so, the proposed modifications do two things. First of all, in the planning board section of the UDO, it actually will change the text to, from December 31st to the last day of February for the terms. The second part of it is to amend the Board of Adjustment section for the membership and terms. There actually, right now, is no language in the UDO as far as when their terms expire. So, this adds the language. Terms for members from, within the corporate limits and extraterritorial members shall expire on the last day of February, and then all members shall serve until the expiration of their terms or until their successors have been appointed. The other thing that the proposed ordinance that you have in front of you, other than just amending the UDO, it will automatically extend just amending the U D O, it will automatically extend the terms for all of our in-town members from December thirty-first to the last day of February of the following calendar year, so two months' extension. And then it also puts in their request, and I will send a request if you approve this ordinance tonight, to Wake County to ask Wake County to also extend the terms of our ETJ members for the same duration. And then what we'll do is, we're going to have our applications be due in December, and then you'll have them right before the Christmas break, and then the second meeting in January will be when we will do our term appointments. And so this did go, whoops, I don't, we don't want to restart.
I don't know what that is. No, just postpone.
Let's postpone for four hours. There you go. All right, there we go.
Smashing, right away.
And so the planning board, this did go before our planning board at the last meeting. They didn't have any questions or issues or concerns. They did recommend approval of it, and this is a public hearing. I don't believe anybody, whoops, my slide, public hearing slide disappeared, but...
Any questions of Gina before we open and close?
Sounds good. Makes, solves a lot of problems. And it extends their, extends, they get paid for two more months, right?
They do, double salary.
You'll be able to get this to...
You did ask that one, right, Tom? Yeah.
And to clarify for everybody, they're, they don't get paid, they're completely volunteer boards.
Technically, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak?
Yes.
Next meet, their first, their first meeting in November, so they'll be able to approve it.
Correct.
Before they, they would have expired.
Exactly.
All right, so technically, we'll open, close public hearing and their further discussion.
Okay.
If not, go, please.
Motion to accept the following statements as being true. The requested U D O text amendment is consistent with the vision of Holly Springs comprehensive plan. The proposed U D O amendment, were we reading the slide thing? Huh? Okay. Proposed U D O amendment provides the tools necessary for sta, nevermind, I see it, for staff and the development community to implement goals and objectives stated in the plan.
Second.
Most have made a second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
I was going, whoa.
Motion passes, number two.
Motion to adopt ordinance number fourteen dash oh eight to approve and enact U D O text amendment number fourteen dash U D O dash oh two to modify the text of the Unified Development Ordinance as submitted by the town of Holly Springs.
Second.
Most have made a second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Good job. Gen I of seven eight, consent agenda, Mayor Pretlem.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Most have made a second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, other business. I want to quickly say crosswalk campaign's still going on, and we're making progress. So is the anti-bullying campaign. You have been reading about school buses and kids getting hurt and/or killed passing school buses, so that's going to be part of my crosswalk campaign, that, that's heavy-duty stuff. And I just wanted to mention it. Last, the twenty-fifth, which is coming up this Saturday, is Holly Fest, and that's ten to four at the Sug Farm. Others?
Gee, where's the Sug Farm, Mr. Parks and Rec? Did they get those signs done yet? They're up? Great.
Thank you, Lynn. Anything else?
Yes, one thing was in the paper today, the News and Observer. I think we have a representative from News and Observer here.
We do.
They're always accurate, but they...
Well, he is, anyway.
They brought to light the Holly Springs Girls Golf Team at Holly Springs High School.
Yep.
Took the regional for the first time in history, so congratulations to them, so...
It's a good thing.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else on other business?
Just remind everybody of Holly Fest this weekend.
Yep, I did. I'll do it again.
Come out.
Ten o'clock to four o'clock.
And stay around for the haunted hayride afterwards.
Be there, be square. Anything else?
Nope.
Managers report.
Yeah, quickly, earlier this month, we had two open houses at the, I guess sponsored or hosted by the fire department, and we got our attendance results in. Station one, which was the first open house, we had seven hundred in attendance for that, so that was very well attended.[1696.41]